Cost of.
How many teams, how many kids?
So you know, that's what we have. Thirty four teams. Each team averages about thirty kids.
Age groups?
Four to twelve.
So right now, you're in Madden, just traveling wherever you can find it.
There wasn't a single last this last fall with COVID and ECIC shut it down, not allowing anyone using it for the facilities. Didn't have a single Odessa team that could have had a place to call on. We all played with their midland members. Crane, who played out of town.
Can we hear from Odessa's softball organization?
Yes, I heard. You were asking about them. They're a big board and a part of our next three teams. We also use, we also have many players who are back there to play. Those also contribute to that. We use to take our equipment as well, but we use to line up fields and grab the figures and. Do the players, all that sort of thing. And we've done, I bet very well, we reached our process, well, last year here in the terror of COVID. We actually put on a free league of COVID. It was a cost of the league, but you want to keep people playing. And it's a sad, it's a sad thing to me that softball has diminished so much in the course of the year. In the late nineteen eighties, we were playing on seven or eight different fields and playing five games a night. But here they go.
We just got old. We just got old. And we got to win.
To me, there's a, there's a problem, there's a problem with. There's a problem that people don't, young kids who are playing, don't move up. You've got baseball players, by the time they get to junior high, they're almost about the only thing that's left is select teams. By the time they get to high school, there are few select teams and high school teams. When they get through with high school, there's kind of those guys aren't playing baseball.
There's a gap after twelve years.
Yeah, and, and the girls softball player, they're not playing softball.
There's a gap. Some of the cities.
They start playing school activities.
We have to be eighteen.
Well, let me.
It'd be great moving.
So are you adult softball?
Yes.
Okay, so how many teams are you planning, what's your average participation annually?
Oh, annually, well.
I mean, just ballpark.
I would say last year, we probably had a total of sixty teams, maybe seven.
The entire year?
Yeah.
Well, we have thirty two Sunday night teams in the spring.
Thirty two Sunday?
Thirty two Sunday night teams in the summer day. Thirty two teams in the fall day. And thirty two teams in the winter. That's our capacity. We run four games on all eight fields every Sunday.
Then you have coed mixed into that. And you're, how many fields do you have?
Eight.
Now, those are just the Sunday night men's teams.
What's that?
The thirty two teams.
Yeah, I'm just saying, how many fields overall do you have access to?
Eighteen fields. And each team has fifteen to twenty five players. Depends on how hard you have that team play.
Well, let me ask you, is there, is there church?
Not per se, there's a church coed that gets in the car and we come on there.
Yeah, the first, the first of June.
Are y'all averaging, are y'all, are y'all doing eighty tournaments?
Yes, we held a tournament on February thirtieth and another one on February twentieth and first, two day tournament. The January thirtieth tournament yielded twenty eight men's teams and eleven coed teams. February tournament yielded twenty one men's teams and ten coed teams.
When's the last time we got a state tournament? I'll tell you when I know, I know that one.
That was, that was in two thousand one. That was back when we were ASA.
Eight, whatever you're on that.
We did for ASA.
Oh.
Seventy nine, we were building like fifty six in a state tournament.
How much name does that play in that?
I'm sorry?
I've played in that one.
Oh, you did?
We just got old, we just can't.
I can't deny that.
The knees are gone.
I need to talk to you about that.
So Tom, so Tom just wanted to make sure that you had fish law activity and also baseball under that. So Tom, any other thoughts or comments?
I've got a few thoughts, a few comments, but no. You mentioned, I always think Christian Thomas mentioned about the team housing and other part coming into. It's being used by soccer. We use every single facility that the city's alive at us and more. We've got teams practicing in the back row. We've got teams practicing in crossroads. We recently lost, we've got teams displaced and had to practice in, where they practice. We had, we had a tournament, we've got a tournament, we actually had a tournament next week, you know. We have had tournaments in the city where we've actually used some of your facilities. Back in Dr. Locke's here, we use McPenny Park, we use Sherwood Park, we use Fort Worth Park, and of course, we use U T P. We use every single spot that the city's alive at us because we have about two thousand pairs and about two hundred teams. We've got the biggest footprint in the city. Now, it's a, it's probably the easiest game to play if you can pretty much form it, right? And our, and our people do that. But like Mark said, we do the best we can, you know, we help them the very best we can, but we do not coddle them. You know, we're on the same boat. I've, I've still got great kids playing. And I'm still coaching, we just go to two teams right now. Sometimes two or three.
Did I do that twenty two to four in the morning? Was that what you considered?
We just do whatever we can do. And, and I got a kid after playing T-ball this year, so it's the first time. But I guess some of the questions I have is, you know, we talked a lot about revenue. And you know, I can speak for soccer. I mean, we're, we're pretty solid. And you know, I've been on the board on this, on the soccer board since nineteen ninety four. That may sound like a long time, but just people have been through and they've been on there for longer than I have. And over those years, we've developed a system that is accepted by our organization. And we've been, I would say, extremely successful in growing the soccer program. And that's thanks to, obviously, the city, what that says, maintaining the field, giving the field. We've continually grown. I was thinking the situation, everybody was down and told whatever they had, we've grown, grown, grown. You know, the questions I would have for you guys, and I've got, only got a page and a half, so. I mean, how, I don't see how you can improve on what you've done. I really don't. I really think that with you getting involved, I can see it hampering our, our continuing. That's just what I see. Maybe I'm wrong. So how do you guys make what we're doing better? How can you make us improve on what we've been doing?
Well, I guess what I would say is we're not trying to change something that's working well. But as we've talked here today, the, you know, part of the challenge that the university has is, you know, I'm going to have to get a new twenty five year agreement approved from the UT system. So there are requirements for us to be able to make sure that that happens. And in order to do that, you know, we believe that we're going to need to have more active involvement in what's going on. That doesn't mean we have to come in and change anything we're doing in this work. We talked about the concessions. We talked about the issue of navigating and balancing the first priority of your association. And then what about bringing in external tournaments coming in? Someone has to be able to manage and coordinate that. Someone has to work with Discover Odessa to help, you know, with the operations side of running a tournament that is not in your association. We will have to be able to step in and do that, and that's what we'll be good at doing. You know, having the, you know, the financial capability to take the money and audit the books for our own operation. And all of that transparency, that accountability that others have talked about, the university has the ability to do that. In order for us to take the university land that is currently dedicated to this. And as I said, again, we want to continue to dedicate it, we believe in it. But we have to make it work for the university and for the city as well. And I've got an agreement through that is going to most definitely have to be different than the agreement that we're currently at. And so a part of the ability for the university to work with Discover Odessa to bring in these tournaments without destructing what you're doing, will take central scheduling and coordination. Someone has to be the coordinator of all of that. It can't be four separate associations when you're trying to navigate not just the association you work, but also the work that will come in with the tournaments. And the concessions, we, we believe we can make money doing it, as you're aware.
So I mean, you did mention accountability, and you mentioned it again. And the way it's worked, everything's not been involved, is we have the accountability, which is exactly where I think it should be. Steve doesn't come to me and say, Tom, you got to put on four tournaments this year. I go to Steve and say, hey, we're going to put on four tournaments this year. And, and I take care of everything. I told the chairman, they want to bring tournaments in. And the problem bringing tournaments in for soccer, I can speak for soccer, I can't speak for anything else, is that when you bring somebody in to run a tournament on the fields that we use, they want us to do all the work and they take all the money. And I told them, I said, any tournament you can bring in here, I guarantee I can do it better. And I'll tell you the same thing.
And we won't try to fix what's not working.
I don't need anybody helping. We helped me, I say, ah, we don't need anybody helping. Well, we already got it worked. In this part of the country, I know what goes on in soccer. And I know I can't put ten tournaments out of this, I can't do it. The teams are going to come for one, maybe two, unless I, unless I attempt to play a little bit, maybe a three v three or a small sided tournament, something a little bit different, focus on, like I told you, Todd, a showcase again, which we do already, we've done for like the last ten years. And, and, and the, the group I cranked with you, I really don't need you guys to do that stuff. I feel.
If you have the tournaments, you know, if we are, if we follow this scenario that we're working with all the fields, not just the U T P B fields, then someone has to be able to manage and coordinate all of that. And you, and you need a central coordinator to be able to. So I mean, I, I, I think it's, it's, the coordination goes beyond the individual associations. It's not to say that what you're doing is unsuccessful or it's not working. But it also has to work for this larger purpose that we provide an additional source of revenue to add more fields. I mean, I think the, the study that the city did already said that, you know, about a twenty, twenty five million dollar investment and all of that, adding more fields on our property to be able to have more opportunities for you and also for the tournaments and to make them improve so that they can be competitive. Everybody wins if we do that.
And I would say too, you know, when you and I, when you and I spoke, we would, I would be open to ask, to allow you back, access to the Duck Pond Field, this field, this scenario, so allow you to spread out this, still remain, because that's all part of campus and all part of that agreement. And, and that is, and one of the other things that we talked about was you do, you know, it's very evident that you have knowledge of it. And I think we can learn from you how to do what you're doing and, and say, we can add resources to that for you guys. It may not be, like, the concession state is alleviating you of a headache maybe, right? And, and so that's one of the things that we can, we can do in great, maybe, again, adding access to additional spaces. And one of the things we talked about was developing where that cap oil well is. If, if we can put another soccer field or two right there and adding that footprint and. And then, and I showed you the master plan for the campus about adding some additional fields over there. Because as you've stated, there are, there's a need for more fields and more access. And, and we want to be able to grow that, and I think growing that and adding to that into our inventory is, is critical. If we're going to continue to grow, because it sounds like you're, you're almost at a critical mass of what you can do and manage and bulging at the seams, if you will. And, and if we're able to tap into that and grow those fields and enhance them, I know, whatever that looks like, adding lights, doing those kinds of things to, to help, that we can carry some of the water on with Discover Odessa and those kinds of things. That's where I see we, we can add value for you. And then we can learn from the way you all operate and apply that across all of what we want to do.
I, I can look into something, I can see that as part of an improvement scenario, basically more field space. If there was a better ability to light, Jeff and Dennis talked about that yesterday. And I hope I didn't come off across.
No, not at all.
I guess other questions, I, I mean, I have to. I, I guess, is there going to be, if, if we do get a new agreement with you guys, the city, you and us, is there going to be any type of fees for associations, fees for participants, fees for games? You know, because you kept talking about revenue, and quite frankly, I can't see where it's coming from.
Yeah. So our goal is not to take any revenue from you. The current agreement requires the associations to provide ten percent back to the institution. And that is part of why the, 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 the board regents approved it, but I'm not quibbling with that. But, and, and then we also have a situation where the associations themselves are using some of their revenue to make improvements on the field. You know, or to, you know, to add bad engages or to whatever thing that you do. So I think what we would do is sit down with the association, try to figure out what part of this needs to be centralized so that you have not any less money than you need to run your operations. Does there need to be a central plan for the, the improvement of the field? And if so, you know, you're already investing in those. Is there a reason for us to come up with some sort of fee structure rather than you individually making that or not? So we're open. We don't have the answer. What I can say to you is, we are not trying to, in any way, make it unaffordable for you to do your job. We're not trying to take any of the money that you're used to having to be able to run that. We're trying to grow it even larger and in a way that we can invest even more. So I don't know the, the exact answer to that, but it's not my intention to charge a bunch of fees. That, that's not my intention. I do have to make the agreement work with the UT system. And their agreement is generally predicated on, you know, the, the amount of revenue that is fair market value for, for the university, okay? The, the goal would be to get the fair market value, if we have to do that on the agreement and all that has to go through legal, to come from the association revenue, so that I don't have to touch anything that you're doing. Because our priority is not to change your, your operations. Our priority is to be able to get a long term agreement through that is going to have to be different because this, the value of our property is different than it was twenty five years ago. And so we need a systematic, organized way to do that so that you all agree on the approach, we all agree on the approach, and everybody wins, and that is our goal. How we're going to do that, I think that's why we need to transition over here to figure that out.
We've discussed a lot here about tournaments. And I talked a little bit about it when we met twelve weeks ago. I guess, what, what is the goal? And in this question, I just talked about, I guess, all of us are in that. What is the goal for tournaments? And I'm talking specifically, I need to give you that answer. I mean, when you guys on the seat, I mean, I think I pulled a pot, I can come up with four dates, but I think I picked the fourth, but any more than that. You know, I just want to make a spot, I'll give you just a quick example. About five years ago, we decided, the board decided to have an older tournament. It would be like selecting field levels as well and then academy team for two days. So I told the board, this is my idea, let's try this. But I'm going to try it for three years. I don't want to give a one year that doesn't work, right? It just doesn't work. We tried it for three years. That was like three or four years ago, right? The first year, the tournament didn't make. But we adjusted our fees, adjusted a few things, made a little bit for the second year, tournament didn't make. Made some more adjustments. Third year, tournament didn't make. And that was why I kind of geared up the board, let's try three years, it won't make. So I know from a soccer standpoint, I don't know everything up here, but I know what our limitation is, I know what we can do. I'm almost positive I can get four tournaments a year, but I can't get any more than that. Would anybody else tell you that they can't play soccer?
I think, I think I do. I think what we would want to do, and this is just me spitballing, so don't hold me to any of this, would be to find, to at least initially, find a set number of weekends that work over the course of the year and carve those out on a calendar and say, we're going to try to bring in team, or tournaments on these weekends or these set, these days. And so everybody is open and understands what that calendar looks like and navigate all of those moving parts. And I don't, I don't anticipate us having a tournament fifty two weekends out of the year for soccer. We couldn't do it. We couldn't sustain it. I mean, we, we've just gone through having every athletic team that we sponsor in the spring. And I have time that I'm ready to just sit back and take a breath. So that's, that's a, a lot to take on. But if we wanted to do ten weekends out of the year that was a mixed bag of adult league softball, youth baseball tournaments, those kinds of things that we bring in, then, then maybe that's what we do when we work with Discover Odessa on promoting them and making sure. And then are there teams that are local that we, we hold spots for in those tournament weekends? So we have some of that local participation in these tournaments. And we're not, we're not necessarily excluding you, but we're trying to be as inclusive as possible.
So you're saying collectively, twelve tournaments?
Collectively, yes.
All associations?
And, and again, don't pull me to that number, I'm, but I'm, we got to start somewhere. We got to start somewhere. Look, we got to start somewhere.
Well, and the other, the other thing.
That would be more, that would be more doable. We were under the impression that each association was going to have ten tournaments. And, and that would just be, I mean, we wouldn't have the, run the department for that. That's, that's.
We don't have the ball.
Right, but if there's, if, whatever number works, like, Tom is very vocal about four dates, four weekends. And that, that's great. But that, you know, there may be a mixed bag of two adult softball tournaments. And you know, whatever that, whatever that is, but let's, let's buy some days. And there may be some overlap on those weekends where we have a soccer and an adult softball. I don't know. Again, it's.
We've done that before, there's no party.
Well, and the, and the other thing is, you know, back to the, the possibility that, you know, that we use all the facilities fields, some of those that aren't used right now. And it, in part of the rotation of what we do. Then we have the ability, we have more space, we don't have to, because our priority is going to not to be displace local sports. That's our priority. But we have unused fields. How can we manage and juggle that in a way that everybody can have to play in the practice time, even if they may have to move around to, to different fields? And that is another value of having kind of a central organization.
And I'm not going to refute that. To be quite honest, we are, we are. So, I mean, like I said before, marketing the test, we use everywhere we need to. And when we have a tournament, we, we, if we have a team, which we have.
Where is the pack to run?
When we have the teams, you know, we use McPenny, Sherwood, U T P B, all at the same time we plan. And I'll be honest with you, it's difficult because it stretches, stretches the ball. But we've done it before. So I said, we have to do this first. So currently, the facility use agreement that each of us have with the city has a, a, a structure of how we communicate with them, with Steve or Corey or whoever, to get maintenance done at the field. Because a lot of us do our own stuff, but there's some stuff that we just can't do or they won't let us do. Although I have to use the free sprinklers out there right now. So, I mean, is there like, um, that communication, I mean, like.
We would have to work with the city and we work with you on how that would work.
What is the structure? Just who we, what's the structure of communication?
I've got a good relationship with the guys, but basically, we request, make a official request. Hey, there's a water leak over on field three, it's out there, can you guys help look at it? You know, and usually they're pretty quick to get it done. If there's, you know, we wanted to take a tree out a couple summers ago because we were going to move our fields around and the tree was in the way. And of course, I know, you know, like taking trees out of West Texas, we didn't have any other way to deal with it. So the request was, hey, you know, we need to take this tree out, unlook at it, you know, we did it, we paid for it, we signed a good commission. Hey, we want to put, we want to put a goal in out here at McPenny Park or whatever. It's basically the communication, make your formal request, they respond back, you know, we'll get that done in a certain timeframe.
So you're pretty much universal with all the associations?
Yeah, we, we would just have to figure out how best to do that. We would look to you and the parks and do the work in the city to figure out how to make it work.
Okay, and then I guess on that same, kind of on that same vein, we talked a lot about scheduling. And just that why scheduling is. So in terms of scheduling, I'm just sort of thinking, scheduling, maintenance, field prep. How do you see that working? Light usage, field usage, you know, the scheduling is going to be, I've got my season, I mean, soccer goes year round. We've been year round for a long time. What else is not, I was there all year round now. But I mean, we have some hard and fast days, like, you know, the Saturday after spring break till the Saturday for former mortal day. We're out there every Saturday, games, some Sundays, some Mondays, some Tuesdays, some Thursdays. But we're using the three months of facility year round. We've got schedules, like she said, six thirty. We have to have those fields covered. And, and we haven't any problems, trust me. If we schedule a game, the only reason we wouldn't play a game is if we got a windstorm or a snow apocalypse. Other than that, they, they're playing. How do you see that changing or how do you see that working?
I, I would say, you know, those kinds of coordination, that type of coordination is getting, getting into the, the details of how, how we're going to work through all that, the scheduling piece of it and all those things. What, what's, where are the needs? Where, where, what do we need to offer? Where, where we, what can we offer on those scheduling pieces? And the coordination of all those things and making sure that they come off.
So all that will be negotiated through the MOUs between the university and the board?
Again, we, you, you do a lion's share of that or all of it, right? And so like I said to you earlier, I, I feel there's some value and some knowledge to be transferred there or gained about how you're set up and do those things. And I'd like to sit down and work through some of that more in detail with you about how you work the schedule. I'll just, of my own experience here this spring, you know, the, the number of scheduling changes and the number of schedules proposed, just for intercollegiate athletics at our conference level, was, was just crazy. From a COVID related standpoint, and how to manage all those things. So again, I have, I have that, that background, not, not necessarily to the scale we're talking about across the city, but I understand that's how to schedule things and manage that and make sure that everybody is transparent with the time that they have and what the expectation is. You know, I know for a fact that if you schedule a softball double header, you better not make it three o'clock and five o'clock because you're not going to start on time for that second game. You got to have, you got to drag the field, you got to line it, you got to do all those things. And so you have to build all those changeover times in, whatever that may be. So all those things are, are things we, we need to sit down and detail out.
I'm going to go back, I have another note here that I want to address, back to, back to revenue. We've talked about concessions, talked about tournaments that we've talked about. What, what other revenue avenues, you know, are you guys considering thinking that they can make work?
Well, one of, one of the things that the university brings to the table is our own philanthropy and our own facilities master plan for athletics, which, so, so we are in the process. and our own facilities master planning for athletics, which, uh, so, so we are in the process of, uh,